Good afternoon and welcome to the Beaufort County Board of Education Agenda Setting Meeting of November 8, 2021. We will now call the meeting to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm Chair. I approve this agenda for the November 8th Agenda Setting Meeting of the Board of Education.
Thank you. If David is not with us yet, and I don't see that he is, I'll second it. Any discussion?
None.
Okay. There being no hands up, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. The media was properly notified. Do we have a motion, Mr. Mel Campbell, to approve the Committee Meeting Minutes of October 25th, 2021?
Yes, Madam Chair. Move that we approved the October 25th, 2021 Committee Committee Meeting Minutes.
Thank you, and I'll second it because I still don't see David. Any discussion, Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll go on to setting the November 16th Board Meeting Agenda. I'll let Robin display that, thank you. Perfect. All right. So this one's going to
Join the meeting.
David is coming in now.
Yep, thank you. All right, so we this meeting will be at the School for the Creative Arts. It's it's next Tuesday, October 19th. So we have the usual intro at the beginning.
I have a question for the intro at the beginning. Since we have the student hearing scheduled for the 17th, I cannot, I'm not going, well, I need your advice of what do I need to put down in the event the board has not finished all items listed on November 16th? We will reconvene 6:00 PM on when? The 18th? The 18th?
I think we
Or do we say we're going to reconvene at all? We'll have to finish the meeting that night?
I think my my suggestion would be just take that whole segment out. We know we can't reconvene at 6:00 PM on the on the on the 17th for special call meeting is then. And so then the board could decide, okay, it's 9:15 and what do we want to do? You know? What do you think, Mel and David? Or Mel first?
I I agree unless you want there's no way we can reschedule that student meeting, so unless we're going to do it earlier than that time. I agree with, I move it on the, to the 18th. So many the hearing would be over on that day.
Right. What's your David, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds logical. Move it to the 18th.
Okay.
And then, you know, just try like hell to not over, go over.
Right.
Okay.
I was thank you, I was going to say, I believe that Dr. Rodriguez has a commitment on the, on that night.
That's correct, I have a commitment on the 18th at night, speaking engagement.
One question I do have is the, this is my first student hearing, it's at 4:00. So couldn't we just start the meeting at 6:00 or am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, the, it's not anticipated that the hearing will be done at 6:00. So anybody, Melvin or David? Want to make a move on what to do with that section?
Well, let's, let's take deeper into speaking engagement, what time is that speaking engagement, Doc?
6 o'clock in Bluffton. So one, one question is, would it be possible on Wednesday to start to do the second part of the meeting at 7:00? If, if we went?
You'd be done at, at 7:00?
No, no. I'm saying that's the speaking engagement on the 18th is at 6 o'clock start time, so, so but but the Wednesday, when, when the board has a hearing, is it the hearing starts at what time?
4:00.
4:00.
4:00. So so would it be possible to have the, whatever's left of the meeting at 7:00?
I don't think so because I've been told that it may take as long as three and a half to four hours, and I think that will be plenty for one night personally. Got it.
So let's look at this agenda and see. You know, can we do something here?
Yeah, another possibility would be to have the, the unfinished business go to like the next board meeting. But that wouldn't be until
December 14th.
Exactly, almost a month.
When I, when I look at at the agenda, seems to me that we have an item at the beginning of executive session that would need some some board action coming out of executive session if the board chose to do that. And then there aren't any other board business actions unless something comes out of committee that would require.
It's a pretty light agenda, we should be able to finish everything on night. That's knocking.
My preference is to just remove that statement and then let the board decide at 9:15, what are we going to do with, if, if we have anything left? That would be my preference.
I think that's that's where we, that's where we're at right now, I believe.
Yeah, it seems like that's where we've landed. Are you okay with that, David?
I can only hear
Okay.
Frank.
So we'll just leave the meeting, take off the part about reconvening the following day at 6:00 PM because that's out given the special call meeting. And, and just the board can decide at 9:15 on, on Tuesday, are we going to, you know, extend the meeting an hour? We're going to, or, you know, extend till we finish, or are we going to go to another day?
Yep, that, sounds good.
Okay, I see Wendy has her hand up.
I was just going to say that under FOIA, if you're going to another day, you've got to give the 24 hours notice, so.
Well, we already determined we can't go to the, to the following day, so it has to be 24.
Right, so if you decide, we just have to make sure we post the notice, that's all.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, yeah, thank you.
All right, so next we go on to executive session, and we have other items that need to be added, I know. We need an update from Jean Matthews.
I think that's one of Wendy's, one, she has two issues, and I think that's one of her two issues on here. I have received a legal advice by attorney, and there's two issues, one is insurance and one is with Jean Matthews.
And Board members and Ms. Christian Berry, when the meeting was just starting, Mr. Matthews called and said he would be available to, to update you.
Okay, great.
He confirmed he would be available.
Okay. So the order here.
So which way you want me to move it?
Well, to me, it seems like it might be smart to make Jean Matthews first, since one of the board members is not participating in that portion.
And then the other issue with respect to the insurance coverage is that the South Carolina School Board's Insurance Trust Attorney emailed me and said he would let me know tomorrow if he would be available. So I'll know that tomorrow, and I can let everybody know, but he could not commit right now due to, you know, personal situation.
All right.
So starting at 4:30, is that enough time?
Well, we have another item, and that is Ms. Andrea White is likely to, she's going to come back and likely talk further with board members and so that would be whatever you had before, it's the same
Got it.
Same item as last time.
That's just for my FYI, so I'll get the right wording.
And then, I don't know, I mean, I think Dr. R. can weigh in about, so we got contract with Hery referendum work for 2022 and the receipt of legal advice regarding the amendment of charter school bylaws and amendment to Appendix 1 of the charter school contract, I mean, I don't know. It seems like we're going to have to start at 4:00 again, I don't know.
That, that matter is pretty straightforward, it's more of a procedural situation.
Okay.
Take that long.
Given that we're adding Andrea, can I suggest that we go ahead and start at 4:00?
Yeah, I think that's smart. I, I concur. All right.
Do we want to put her first? Do we want to? We have two outside attorneys coming, does it matter in which order? Or whose availability is what time?
Yeah, I don't think it really matters, and, and really hers is a finishing of what was started previously, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, you I guess, I don't think it really matters who's first.
All right.
All right, so we got 4 o'clock for the executive session. Then we've got our usual other things there, the student performance.
Yep.
Point to celebration, first public comments. Chair's report, I'll, I'll, we'll come back to that, or I'll
Okay.
I'm not sure right this minute. Committee reports.
The only one that may meet is operations, and I'm waiting on Mr. Smith to say if we're going to have that meeting Wednesday or not. Other than that, that's the only committee meeting, uh, committee report.
Okay, thank you. Then we're on to the Mel, yep.
Is Kathy on?
She's not operation, she's not the operations.
I know, she's academics.
Oh, you're right. I was supposed to have academics, yes, we had, we had academic committee meeting.
Right.
Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
All right.
Because I put the OE in, in consent, so, yes.
So next, Dr. Rodriguez. Can you, I've forgotten, are you, can you see this, or do you want me to read what we've got?
It's instructional reviews.
So Dr. Rodriguez, we're down to the superintendent's report.
Actually, I'm going to hang up.
Can you hear me?
Yes. All right, we're on the agenda for Tuesday, Superintendent's Reports, Goal 1, Student Achievement Instructional Reviews. Under Fiscal Responsibility, Monthly Transparency Report, the Monthly Hundred Thousand K Report, Board Monthly Budget and ESER Update. And then under Other Matters, you have
Are we on Superintendent's Report?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, and then under Fiscal Responsibility, I have the typical reports on there, the Monthly Transparency Report, the Monthly Hundred K Report, Board Monthly Budget. And then being the second meeting, we have the ESER Update.
Yep.
Okay. Then, under Other Matters, the first thing is really more of an announcement, so I don't know if you want it under the announcement section, or if you just want me to announce it here, but it's regarding groundbreaking ceremony for Robert's balls, that would be on December 7th. What's that?
I don't think it matters where it is, that's fine there.
Okay. And then, and then just the follow-up COVID update.
Okay. Don't see any
Yeah.
All right, next is as we mentioned, we don't have action under, separately under board business, we have the consent agenda. With meeting minutes and OEs.
Kathy's hands up.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay, under the consent agenda, Robin, I think we're supposed to have from academic OE 1217.
Okay.
OE 132 to 136 is correct. And then OE 1217.
Let's see. All right, wait a minute, what am I doing? Oh.
And you can take off the OE 14, we've moved that to our next meeting.
Okay. All of it?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have two sections, 14.3 and 14.2, and those are at, to be talked about at our next meeting.
Okay.
So what we did discuss and move forward was OE 12.17. And OE 12.3, or 13.2 to 13.6.
OE 12 points 13 to
17, 17.
Right, well, I was trying to put them in numerical order first.
Okay, well, it's just OE 12.17.
Oh, okay.
And then OE 13, you've got correct.
All right, OE 12 is, what is it, the title?
Instruction Oh, let me see. It's sitting right out here. Um Instructional Program, and the, the title of the 17, 1217. 17 is the one that ensure that each student has access to guidance. It's the guidance one.
Okay.
Guidance services, basically. It's more, you know, more than that, but just
Right.
The gist of it.
So, let's see, I take the adjournment information off at the bottom here, too.
And so then do you also want the next schedule?
Will be December 14th.
Yeah. Okay, so that doesn't include the special calls.
Right, do you want me to list that even though that's a student hearing, because it's not a board, regular board meeting?
Yeah, it's not a business meeting, no, I think it's better the way you have it.
Okay.
All right, so let's go to your your list. your list that you have, um, which I think you had in board docs.
I do, let's see. Um. The last two things were were added from the last board meeting.
Mm-hmm. So Kathy, you were the one that brought forward the revisit meeting format policy?
Yes.
Yes, and you were thinking at a, at the, at the business meeting?
Yes, to do, to talk about that, you know, we have a policy that talks about uh, our meetings, but we also have, uh, a motion that we uploaded, and that I just wanted to revisit that.
Okay. So that could be under board business.
Yeah.
So how do I top, um?
I guess, um, we do, maybe you could put the motion there, revisit motion made. Um, you know, the one that said we were gonna mirror. Yeah.
Yeah, let me know, Robin, if you need help finding it. Yeah, I would, I'll be happy to assist. Okay. Um. Yeah. Okay, then can you go back to your list again?
Process for vetting volunteers was the other. That was Ingrid's.
Yeah, and then Ingrid. Ingrid sent another one today about a policy on social media.
Yep.
Use, I guess, we could say.
I don't think that's appropriate for this meeting, because that would probably be a longer discussion, but I think it's something like a work session, maybe. I don't know. I just think that there's, it's like every day, there's an issue, and there's so many, you know, gray areas. And I just think it's gonna be more so. The volunteer thing, what the, the, the reason I wanted to explain the volunteer thing is, you know, as people are wanting to get back into the schools, we have a new background check provider, um, which has caused a little bit of flummoxing, and so as I was looking into it, um, I found some other school districts are doing some pretty cool and innovative things, like one school district says that any volunteer over the age of sixty-five gets free tickets to athletic events, you know, just some things we can do to kind of keep the, um, community, you know, partnership aspect going, so, and then one other question I have with volunteers, looking at O E four, I think it is, with H R, is that H R, uh, runs background checks on all volunteers with direct student contact, so I don't know who's tracking that, because I don't think we should have to run full background checks if you're just gonna work a concession stand, you know, once or twice a year, um, and I've seen some schools use language like direct and unsupervised. But then I know, I'm pretty confident that there are volunteers in the school that have a lot of direct and unsupervised contact with students who aren't necessarily going through that process, so it just seems like something to, um, talk about.
Okay.
But it's not like pressing.
Yeah, not pressing, I agree, Mr. Earl Campbell?
Um, who, I was gonna say that there's a process in place already, all volunteers, they go online and and, uh, do their application.
Yeah, and I actually, I had several constituents who are older, um, have trouble, because, and it was, it's a long story. I did it, I didn't have problems with it, um, it's just more a question of what's the standard, like who has to get the full-on background check, which I think our district, if I understand correctly, pays forty dollars per person for, and who doesn't? And then the other thing is, I know there are a lot of people, you, it's basically self-reporting, you go in to the link kind of on your own, I don't know of a process, at least in the schools that I'm familiar with, and that's not just Hilton Head, that, um, where the school is making sure that people that are in the schools have done that process, to me, it seems like it requires, um, what's the word, some, it's the motivation on behalf of the volunteer to go to the website and click that link, I don't know, I know Alice says that they keep a list. I just don't know if we're matching that list that H R has with who's actually in the schools, so it's just something I thought, as volunteers start coming back in, we can check.
Yeah, they are supposed to be issued a card. That's the version in the past, because my wife was 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 a volunteer, and that's what they, they, they issued a card for them once they declared to go into the school, they're volunteers.
Yeah, I just don't know if we're still doing that.
Right, like you said, um, Ingrid, it's not a, um, you know, or matter for, I don't think the next week that it has to be urgent.
No, I just wanted to clarify what my request was, sort of how we can both encourage volunteers and
Right.
make sure that the procedures are being followed that we already have.
Okay. So I think since we're in in interest of time for this, uh, for Tuesday, I think we should stop where we are.
Totally agree.
Okay, so does Ma- do Mallor, David, have anything to add to this, uh, this agenda that we just, uh, went through?
No, I don't.
Okay, David? You think he left, okay. All right, and there are no hands up, uh, of others. So I think that finishes this one, Robin.
Okay.
So the next one would be the, um, special call meeting of November eighteenth, and, um.
Well, seventeenth, right?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, sorry, thank you, that would not be good, thank you for the correction. So I, we don't, do we need to go through that, Robin, you know?
I don't have an agenda yet, because I was wa- waiting till after we speak with the attorney, who is going to be representing the board, and for him to give direction as to what the agenda should say and so forth.
Okay, all right. And then we have another, uh, agenda item, um, and that is, uh, Peggy Torrey, who came and spoke with the board a few times already, and 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 district staff. And Dr. Rodriguez and I have spoken about this, that we feel that now that we've, um, started the implementation of our new, you know, governance policy manual, including the O Es, uh, that it would be nice to have a sort of a checkup uh, with Peggy Torrey to, um, for the, for both the staff and the board members to do that uh, with a, I guess, maybe a a half-day work session, or a, I don't think that would be a regular board meeting that would want to do, I don't think it would allow better discussion if we had, you know, a few hours, and, um, Dr. R, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I agree with you, I think, uh, it lends itself better for a, for a work session, so that uh, we have whatever time we need around it, uh, since it's, you know, it's our governing structure, so we want to make sure that we dedicate whatever time we have, uh, available to it, and that sounds reasonable, uh, what you suggested, so it's perfect.
Okay, so, um, Robin, uh, do you know, um, Peggy's availability, or, uh, I know we're getting into the, um, Thanksgiving holiday, and we've now added the special call meeting next week, too.
So when I talked to Peggy, um, we were thinking about, or she has availability like on December ninth between, um, and that's prior to Christmas, um, and she said it would only be a half a day, so would, you could do it after a morning to up to lunch, or lunch in, or, and then afternoon, but she said it would only, she thought it would only need to be a half a day.
Okay, so December ninth is a Thursday. Um, do, uh, the committee members, uh, David and Mel, have any, uh, comments about the the day or the program?
I think it's a good idea, I don't know how we, how we reached that decision, though, to have them, have her here without the other board members agreeing on it. Now, that's the only thing I'm concerned about the process.
Well, we could, um, we could have it as a, a board business action item Tuesday, we could make the date tentative for Thursday.
That would, that would, that would be appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I think that's very reasonable, given that we're gonna be, there'll be obviously, uh, uh, some funds that would or there would be, you know, it would cost, cost us, uh, some money.
Right.
All right, so, I'm gonna say potential, what do you want to?
Yeah, say, um, I don't know, uh.
Suggested, potential follow-up to, or, I don't know.
Or propose.
Opportunity.
Opportunity, there we go, Kathy.
Proposed opportunity?
Yeah. Uh, to, to, uh, have Peggy Torrey. We'll say a half-day on that day, half-day.
Um, you had two board members who are also decided that they will participate in the virtual class that's on December sixth, so those two board members might also have some input on December ninth.
That sounds very reasonable.
Or.
Can you, um, when you're, can you reach out to Peggy Torrey, just so we have an estimate of the cost?
Okay.
Because that will be a question, I think, from the board members. And are the options to do it, you know, morning or afternoon?
Mm-hmm. Proposed opportunity to meet with Peggy Torrey on December ninth for a half-day follow-up to coherent governance, or?
Yeah, um. We can say, uh, I'll think of another word there.
All right.
Or maybe Dr. R will. Ingrid.
So, um, our next, so we have a meeting next week, and then we don't have a meeting until December, mid-December. And I was trying, do we have, like, do we normally do a work session, I seem to recall that after the election, just at the calendar, do we have anything like that on the schedule?
We, oh, the work session was after the election, because it was the election, uh, in between the elections, the work session is in October, and we only normally have one meeting in December. Um, then there would be a work session in, uh, end of January. At your December meeting, you'll be approving the calendar for twenty, uh, for the next, um, calendar year.
Okay, I just wondered why.
There will be a calendar for, at the next meeting for, um, for the board to approve.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um. There is, it, there is also an S I C meeting, um, correct, I believe it's the first, it's the week after, um, the week after.
Yes, that S I C meeting is on that Thursday, the first Thursday in Dec- um, first Thursday in December.
Okay. So that's enough.
It is December second.
Okay.
From six to seven thirty.
All right, so what are our?
So we can, we can pose like we normally do with, um, to see, have her, um, hold the S I C people again?
Yeah.
Ingrid's hands up.
Yep, Ingrid.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, uh, is that gonna be virtual again? Or are we gonna have a, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I didn't know if we were getting, you know, some things are going back to in-person, so I just wasn't sure if these things were or not.
Yeah, we didn't, I mean, we, that hasn't been determined, but, uh, has.
I guess after, after the, the, the nineteenth, because we have that on the agenda, so whatever the board decides after that.
Yeah, it's the sixteenth, right.
On the sixteenth, yeah.
Revisit the motion about getting back, coming back in person, okay. Um. So another thing we need to do before we adjourn is determine when our next agenda-setting meeting is, or do you think we may need to have one before the S I C meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. And we're getting into the holidays. Um.
It's no deep.
You want to have it on the, there is gonna be an academic committee meeting on the twenty-ninth at four thirty. You might want to, uh, meet, um, next, uh, the week of the twenty-second, because that would be a week before.
Yeah, I can, personally, I'm available the twenty-second, I will not be available, uh, the, the, those uh, first few days of the following week, the twenty-nine, thirty-first, and I'm not sure about the second, I hope to be, but I, I don't know, I won't know until it gets closer.
There is an ad hoc belasting group at five o'clock on the twenty-second.
Oh.
So if you can meet at four, I mean, we're, if we're only meeting to, for the S I C, it shouldn't take more than a half hour.
That's good for me, but is that good for you, Mel, and we need to find out from David?
Yeah, to make that happen.
You can make it happen, okay, so why don't you, Robin, query, um, David, not right this minute, but, um, see if he's got availability on that date, and then you can send out it, let the rest of the board know.
Okay.
Okay.
Ingrid stands up.
Yeah, Ingrid?
Nope, sorry, I just forgot, I thought I took it down, sorry.
Okay. All right, is there any other business we need to cover tonight? All right, doesn't seem like there is, so, I, is, David's not connected to us, right?
Nope, he's gone.
Okay, so, um, Mel, you and I, do we adjourn by unanimous consent?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks for.